Right.
We are going to call this media, the Nottingham Board of Selects for Monday, December 6th. We're going to start off tonight with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
We do not have any manifests or any payroll or minutes to approve, so we'll skip over that right now. Is there anything that's from the assigned boards that needs to be discussed or talked about?
I have a planning board meeting tomorrow and Wednesday. We know about budget. That's here.
I did go.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, and it was the school board presenting their budget, their draft budget, which is
Budget's 1.57?
The, they asked about our, where we were increase wise, and I said that we just had a draft. It was, it was put together, but we hadn't taken a pen to it yet. Um, I told him that it didn't really matter yet, but, you know, like I said, you got to take it into account. Um, so the Dan thing, not coming in. Um, they, Michelle is part of the CIP unit, and she kind of ran through a bunch of officials that were in the CIP. I mean, I, I just told them that, like, yeah. Um, yeah, so I think that's it. Tried to forewarn them that.
Pardon us?
Yeah, the only other thing I want to throw in on Marston, who found out today that the concrete pad was four. One, one just came off today in the utility show.
CIP, um, we couldn't, we couldn't have it tomorrow because budget was meeting tomorrow, so we moved it tonight, but then we are having our meeting tonight. So I'm going to try to move it to Thursday. Not, it'll be.
Tony, when are we going to see the goal up? Cause I was like, um, Michelle was going through this. I just. I talked to Courtney afterwards.
It might, yeah, it might have been like off the last year.
And it's, yeah, and it's further out, but the, the budget committee now has a sense of what's.
Yeah. Anything else?
No business for the assessing tonight?
Nope.
So we just move right in for renovations.
So Dale is running a point on the renovation projects that we're going on. We didn't talk about concepts, we all built a RFP based on that. Concepts that work for the school and us. But we didn't think that, we didn't value that, and we just all think that. And so I asked Dale on how they do, how to change directions. And trying to keep you up to speed and knowing what we're seeing before you decide through.
Hey, and for everybody at home, this is Dale Silve here talking this night. He is our building inspector for the town. Uh, so just in case you don't know who just Dale is, that's who Dale is.
So basically what we're going to be looking for tonight is a conceptual approval tonight, and it really comes down to the, the task that was given to us was to find a space for the school, and it was a very short timeframe because of the end of year money to make this happen. The process that we went through isn't your typical process. Normally we would do a design, you put it out for bid, everybody's bidding on the same thing, because this was so hurried, and we weren't exactly sure what would work or not. We went into this with an RFP where we started, and what happens though is we would discover situationals that would work, wouldn't work, and we changed it. In fact, the proposal that I'm going to present to you tonight is actually the fourth proposal that we came up with internally. What we were looking at is the design process. It was, um, several factors were considered that we were looking at and that changed things numerous times. We were looking at cost, looking at cost versus benefit. We were looking at the operation as how well it would work for the school, but we also considered how well it would work for us long-term. If we were going to spend this kind of money on it, it wasn't just for the SAU. We wanted to, even though we weren't remodeling the town hall itself, we wanted to consider that and factor that in for future use, so we would get something and not take out of it. So there were a lot of different things, and all of these kind of contributed to the change, oh, you know, the several changes. Initially, what we were looking at is, if I may, this is not the proposal I'm giving you, but this is initial. Initial proposals, if you remember the space that we had last year that was all the problem when I came in that we found with the electrical, the, the, to the left side, that is the space that we want to revamp for the SAU and turn that into offices.
So just for perspective, this right here is the road?
Yes, exactly.
Yep.
Yep, I'm sorry, here you go. So we were looking at putting three offices. There's the one that's kind of like that, it's not really a safe, but that back room, the concrete that was the addition, that is going to be one room, then there would be the main hall with a separate one. This is what the SAU told us they needed was three offices. We were going to demo the, where the bathrooms were and the utility room and turn that into a kitchenette type thing and make a usable bathroom in there, which would be up on the hallway. You don't really.
Up, up in here?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
So that was our initial plan. What we learned from that, one thing to the other, is one of the main concerns we had is how are we going to, if we were going to insulate that, you had people coming in from one space traveling to another, and we were going to have to heat that hall. It wasn't cost effective for the town, it made no sense, and we weren't going to insulate the whole hall. It's not really historical, but it sort of is. We wanted to be, keep that in mind too. So heating the whole hall, we were initially going to put in a mini-split in there, but I don't think it can keep up with it. It's not going to, it, it just wouldn't be practical. So from that, we went on to Plan B and, and everything kept changing. We were going to change the bathrooms, and the problem with some of this stuff is when you do it, I'm going to make it meet code, so we have to have an ADA bathroom, which the existing ones that we have are not. And we were looking at what do we do for space that, to go from point A to point B, we weren't going to have a hallway, and we didn't think that workers would travel from a heated space to an unheated space back to it, and it just wouldn't happen, and it wouldn't be cost effective. So one thing that led to another, we were also looking at when we demoed those bathrooms, that it's a slab, which I don't believe the plumbing in there right now is intact. So to demo that, we're going to be jackhammering the floors, a lot of money in there, it wasn't that cost effective. The proposal that we're going to give you, which I will, I only made one copy, but. Cost effective, and I also believe it's more than that, long-term it's the most cost effective for the heating purposes and utilities. What we're proposing is there's a little space between the two buildings that we add in addition to that and actually make that part of the living space. One of the benefits of this is we could put the kitchenette in there, which can still be used by residents. It wouldn't be strictly for the SAU, so down the road, if you decide, if the selectmen say we want to do, you know, a ham and bean, then whatever, you know, something, you would have access to it. So the town is actually gaining out of this too. Our proposal is we do that addition, we take one of the existing bathrooms, that was another problem too, instead of just demoing those bathrooms, I don't believe that we have the slope for the septic to move the bathroom. It has to be in the same spot. So we're going to take the existing bathroom, the bigger one that's on the left, if you can picture it, and that'll be part of the process, it'll stay in the same spot, it'll be remodeled, but it'll be part of the new space that'll be heated, insulated, and that, that's the basic concept. I think that it's going to, the, the plan that we give you is going to give the school more space, it's going to do the least work or change to the town itself, but it's going to give the town the new bathroom and a new kitchenette. We'll incorporate the kitchenette that the, um, the town has access to it down the road.
So it'll, it'll, it'll meet the needs of the school board and enhance the usability for the folks in the town, essentially?
It'll do both of those. In fact, I think it'll exceed the needs of the school. We're giving them more space than they initially thought they were getting. It's going to increase the needs of the town, and most importantly, in my opinion, it's going to give us the ability to only have certain areas conditioned where we're not going to be wasting money on long-term maintenance of heating that hall and the back area and stuff like that. We're going to actually have everything encapsulated in one area instead of trying to do two areas.
Yep.
And heat-wise, it's going to save us money in the long run, I think.
Dale, what about like the, the second floor? There's a second floor, right? And that's kind of what we've been told is like, we don't want people up there.
So the second floor is off limits. The only thing that would change in this process because of the roof line is you're going to lose two windows. There's two windows up there that would have to no longer be windows, but we're not using the space anyways.
Okay.
They're not means of egress windows. The upstairs would still be the towns, it's not part of the schools, you'd still have access to it, but we're not going to, that's not part of this project as far as remodeling it.
But there's no additional risk by doing all this work on the, on the ground floor that's posed by with whatever's going on with the upstairs?
None. Doesn't, doesn't affect anything. If anything, not the whole thing because the majority of it won't, but a portion of it would actually be now have, we're going to use spray foam on this. So a portion of that upstairs would actually be better protected.
Okay.
But the majority of it wouldn't be affected at all one way or the other.
Okay.
The upstairs has been off limits mostly for egress purposes. We don't have a functioning fire escape.
Okay.
The windows are really low.
Mm-hmm.
There were some, there's some of that worry up there, but those are the, those are the big ones.
Okay, it's not structural.
There's not, we're not aware of any structural problem with the second floor, it's just not safe to be up there.
The only thing that scares me about that, and it's, it'll be there long after me, but there's this big heavy safe built into the walls, and that is like, if there's ever a fire in that building, that scares me. On the second floor, there's a big heavy safe, it's actually built in, and, and I look at it through the eyes of the fire that, I don't like that. But that is actually not over where the school area is, that's over the main hall, so it has nothing to do with this, but.
Okay.
The other thing that I'd kind of like to bring to your attention is the process of how we got from point A to point B, and it's actually going to be the same thing with the kitchen. Because of the very limited timeframe we had, normally you would do a design process, you would come up with what our plan is and submit it to everybody. We didn't have that luxury. We kind of came up with an RFP and we said, this is our wish list. And as we started talking to contractors, we've relied on some of their experience with things they pointed out, we didn't agree with things, we did agree with things, the plan kept changing. It's not, we don't have, we, we didn't do anything wrong, there's nothing with the policy or anything like that, but how we got from point A to point B.
Yep.
Is where we're at tonight, and this is why it's important, is if we don't do a conceptual tonight, if you don't approve this, which is fine, that's up to you, but if we don't do this, there will not be enough time to do anything this year with end of year money, because if you approve this tomorrow, I have to call up everybody that's bid, and the bid process is still open, but people have been bidding on different things, which really isn't fair. I have to call up everybody and say, this is now the plan, so we're treating everybody the same.
Yep.
There's just not enough time because I'm going to have to come back to you next week, next week? We're going to get out to the contractors and say, this is our, now our new plan, some of them know it, some of them don't, and it's very important ethically that we treat everybody the same, they all have the same thing to bid on.
Yep.
So we're going to go back to them and say, this is our plan now. Do you want to bid on it? You've got a few more days, you've got a week, so I can come back to you next week so you can approve the money for the end of next year. It's such short notice in the process, I understand, but if we don't approve this conceptually tonight, it's not happening.
I just want to point out something time-wise though, it's not just about, you know, using the end of year money, it's also about the school, SAU needing a place. Right?
Well, that's what's driving it, and that's where the end of the year money was the solution.
Exactly.
It wasn't that the end of the year money was the priority, as I understand, it was the school.
Yeah, we can't wait until March.
The school is desperate.
Well, and that's all I'm trying, that's all I'm trying to point out.
Right. If you wait till March.
The, the school needs a spot.
This isn't going to happen. I mean, it, it's really, that's that much of a timeframe, a time crunch.
So as part of this conceptual, where are we budget-wise?
I can't talk numbers with you tonight, and the reason why is because the bid process is still open. If you want to go into non-public, I could, but it wouldn't be appropriate to give you any numbers at all because some people have bid, some haven't. So I can talk non-public if you want, but it, it just wouldn't be fair to, to everybody do, to give you any numbers at all.
Okay.
Well, your plan, I mean, does seem pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, conceptually it seems.
The other nice thing about this is everything is on the backside. You don't see anything from the street, it doesn't change the appearance of the building at all. Everything is encapsulated, um, and then inside, the only thing that changes is we're taking one window out, making it a door, and the reason we're doing that actually isn't for the school, it's for the town, so that the town has access to this kitchen and this bathroom, you know, so you can have use out of it too down the road.
And there's no historical designation for the building?
No, um, we, I've been, I've been using ROTA as the historical point check-in.
Yep, yep.
To make sure that we're, you know, keeping that consideration in mind. They went over, the Historical Society went over a week or two ago and looked at the spot where Dale was just talking about turning a window into a door inside the main room, just to make sure that everybody's comfortable with that concept. They were fine with that. And again, their, their primary interest is in the street presentation of the building and being able to get to use it again. Those are the two things. They want to preserve the look that we have now and get more use out of the space. Those are the two things that they identified and think are extended. So they're in the loop, they see, you know, what they know.
Yep.
This concept, I described this concept to them, they're comfortable with it, and did the same thing with the school. Couple people from the school board transition committee.
Yep.
Explained this. This, this constructs something across the back thing actually came out before we ever got the RFPs, was something that had been thrown around as we were noodling on things.
Yep.
As far as we know, everybody's comfortable with the concept, obviously it's got a, a long way to go, but.
The kitchen's going to be basic, right? Sink, refrigerator?
Yeah, no range, no.
Yeah, we're, kitchenette. It's almost a better way to describe it, it would almost be a break room.
Yeah.
But it would be a little bit more than that for, it'll have a sink and stuff like that, so if you want to use it for anything down the road, you know, you can get a little bit out of it. We're not talking a full, we're not talking a full kitchen or at all, by any means.
Or if rent department wanted to host a senior luncheon or something over there, they'd be able to do it.
It'd be a microwave.
We're talking a sink and a microwave.
Yeah, yeah, which is what we have here.
Nothing more, you know, nothing fancy.
We'll have an oven here, but.
Oh, yeah, okay, right. I.
A break room is another way of phrasing, I think, the kitchenette.
Yeah, yeah.
So what do you need tonight? Just an approval to move forward?
I need to go back to all the contractors and say, this is the plan. So in order for me to do that, because there's still three or four different plans, and obviously I don't have any type of approval authority, this is what my final recommendation is to you. Basically, I'm asking you to be able to present something to you next week for an addition, if you will accept the conditional proposal of.
I'm good with it.
Uh, the back spot where you had marked off as demo, that no longer be, or just going to be, we're just going to clear out the walls and just make it just leave.
We're still going to do a little bit of demo in there. We don't need the boiler, the back door is, I'm reluctant to say this on TV, but I guess it doesn't make a difference now anyway.
No, I know what it is. We know what the door is, yeah, we know the door.
You know, we're still going to do a little bit of demo in that area, clean it out, because that is also, um, where the well is coming in, so it's somewhat of a utility room, but we're not going to do any construction.
Are we taking a heat away from the hall?
We may end up with a propane monitor, something.
In the hall?
To do the hall. The furnace has got to go.
You don't have a heat now. You've got ductwork, that boiler is gone.
Right, so we have nothing now anyways.
You don't have any heat right now. That's going to go.
Long-term, if we're, we're saying it's a place that can be used, you want heat in it.
Yeah.
We're, we're also not taking the ductwork out.
So future, we could put add.
You could put it in. You're not losing anything because you don't have anything right now because nothing works there anyways. The boiler will come out, the, the furnace is going to come out, the.
Cleaning out the broken stuff.
We're basically gutting the room. And that's really for our purposes, not the school.
So again, when we go later on, 10 years, five, whatever down the road, if we want to add a boiler or whatever in there, a heating system.
Well, the other thing too, and this never should have been approved, but that's actually a fire egress right now, and I'm not going to allow that with them in there. You could have two ways out. So that back room has to be cleaned out for an egress anyways, so you can get people out of there. I don't know, it was approved probably decades ago where it didn't matter. So that's part of the demo, is making it a fire egress.
Well, the turning, you know, the office, what becomes the office used to be egress, but now it isn't because it's going to be an office. So we're losing an egress by converting that, you know, you guys.
So we're going to lose, we're going to lose the door that goes into the, that area there?
Yes, because the school's going to want to lock there, they're not going to have that open to the public.
So you're losing an egress, but we're putting in another one?
Yes.
We're replacing it?
Yeah.
Okay.
The door will still be there so that the office can come out to use the hall if they want to?
Right, but the, obviously the, the door that's on the outside, that would be go into where the office is, there's another, there was another door there. There's two doors on that side of the building.
Yes, both remain.
Both are going to remain?
Yes.
Okay.
The problem is if we didn't take out the, the furnace and everything, and you did have people not in the school in the middle of the night over there for whatever reason, they're not going to have access through the school, so there's only one way in and out.
Right, that's why you need, I got, I understand.
So now there'll be a second, second way out.
Perfect.
Okay. I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
I'm very, I'm fine with it also.
So on the kitchen one, real quick, um, really everything that I just said about this one as far as the process is exactly the same how we went through that.
Over here.
For this one here. The thing that is different is we've got our numbers in, um, our numbers are about 10 grand higher. Last year we put in a Warren article, and with COVID, those numbers were based upon almost two years ago, prices of everything have gone up. They're not that bad, but we're going to have to, if we're going to do the kitchen, we're going to have to find some more money above what the Warren article is. It's nothing outrageous, but there's no way of doing it for what we initially asked for because of COVID.
Can we do that?
Yeah, well, you can, you can choose to use other, you know, it's, it's an appropriated purpose, so you can use unspent funds from something else.
Do we have, do we have it somewhere?
Yeah, well, I'm going to finish, follow this with a snapshot of what you've got to work with for these year-end decisions.
Okay.
So you'll, process-wise, it, it may not be a week from now, maybe your last meeting of the year, 28, 27, something like that, where, um, Dale's coming to you with hard pricing and contracts for both of them.
Okay.
So it may, it may not have to be next week, we do have more time to get through that next step, but you're going to have decisions to make about, all right, we have all these things we want to do at year-end.
Yep.
What are we going to do?
When it comes to the kitchen, you have, the money from the Warren article can obviously be encumbered and go forward next year, that's not a problem. It's just that that extra, and I'm making up a number here, but to be safe, let's say 10 grand would be end of year money, that's why we have to get it to you by the end of, you know, before the 31st.
Yep, personally, I'd like us to be able to go forward with that.
Yeah, it's all, it needs to be done, so.
Yeah, it needs to be done.
Uh, so we have a, what do you want to call this plan, a?
Conceptual.
A conceptual plan?
For the town hall?
Yeah.
Conceptual.
We call it conceptual plan for the town hall?
Do you need a motion or do we just, okay, just need a head nods?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes it worth him doing the next round of work and sets you up to know what you're going to see.
Yep.
Next time you see it from Dale.
Yep.
Is that enough for you?
That's enough for me. I've, I've got plenty to go back to the contractors with now and say, this is our plan.
Thank you for taking this on.
No problem.
Yes, Dale, thank you very much. Dude, we really, really appreciate it.
All right.
Anything else on that one?
No, we're good.
Go Pats.
Year-end before kickoff.
Yeah, go Pats.
Dale, are you here tomorrow, are you here tomorrow morning?
Yes. Pats by 16.
Yeah. 16. Lorraine, what was your?
Did, did you need any approval from them for the kitchen renovations?
No.
No, they will in, when I give them real numbers in a couple of weeks, that'll be the approval.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
Can I talk money on that stuff? So I just said I'm going to give you something, you know what's coming. This is, uh, this is the year-end money question. This isn't final, but this is the gist of what you're going to have to work with and decisions to make. My projection as of this morning is that you will finish the year with about 185,000 surplus for the operating budget. Not a, that's not an unusual number.
Yep.
About four, five percent, it's a pretty standard where we often are this time of year, so it's not like we're in a new place, but with that money, you, um, you can leave it alone, or you can use it on appropriated, any purpose, it's got an appropriation and all these things apply. And that list is, uh, what we've identified as things that could fall in here?
What do those numbers add up to of everything here?
Uh, well, it doesn't have the old town hall renovation, so.
Right, right, okay, okay.
It doesn't matter.
Right, 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 okay, yeah, yeah.
Because you won't get them all.
Yep.
We won't get everything on here.
Not even close.
Right.
No, because the, the old town hall is going to consume the vast majority of, of that surplus, so.
Got it, okay.
I will, uh, I don't know, these numbers aren't going to get much sharper than they are. They're, um, they're pretty close to what you're going to be dealing with, and this is probably a last meeting of the year decision for you all.
Yep, yep.
You'll have good numbers from Dale on both projects. The rest of these numbers are pretty, pretty solid, so.
And when you were talking about on here, so it's, you know, the, what, for the police department stuff, that was if we were going to go and pay for that instead of putting it as a Warren article?
Exactly.
That's why you have it listed.
Yep, that was something the chief had asked you about.
At the last meeting, right, that's why I wanted to go, right. I was thinking about that actually today, so.
Those, those as a Warren article, I think, would pass easily.
I think that if we were going on there, the, I think the tasers and training part of that Warren article would easily pass.
I think dashboards would too, dashboard cams.
And again, I had a conversation on Saturday with the chief, just in that, I, I mean, I do, I think the people would support that, but if we had to pick, if I had to pick one that we pay for and one that we put for a Warren article, I think the one that we pay for would be the dashboard.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, I agree with that. Yep.
I mean, we have no other source of, besides pepper spray.
Right.
To detain anybody, and that would be, you know, a direct safety thing for the, the police officers is to have that if they get into a confrontation. I mean, that's.
The sentiment of the budget committee with, the other night was that they can't believe that we don't already have tasers.
Everybody in town that I've talked to says they think that's just.
Yep.
Remember though, when we talked to the chief, she did say that her higher priority was the tasers. So, I would say we would pay that and, and then send the cameras to the warrant article.
So I'm thinking the other way. I'm thinking if you think it's likely to pass as warrant article, you leave it as warrant article.
Right, but we, we really don't know, right? I mean, it's, it's pretty likely. I mean, the, the town supports the department really well, but.
Yeah, I'm personally, I mean, I think they both would pass. Uh, you know, but if we had to, you know, to, from the chief's conversation at the last meeting of her, you know, to, to what she thinks she needs, you know, and it's not a want, it's a, it's a need.
That's fair.
You know, it's something, if we have money to spend, I mean, that is definitely a, a need for them to put the money forward for that.
Yeah, I'm just hedging bets on what would pass as warrant article.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I am too. I mean, I, I was trying to, you know, grab a straw. Every time I, I talked to her, I tried to grab straw poles and see what, you know, they thinks, and
Yeah.
You know, I definitely think tasers is, is something that would be easily passed because
Yep.
I think we're probably one of the only departments around that don't have them.
Yeah, exactly.
If not the only one.
Yep.
You know, I think some people will think cameras are infringing on their, speaking openly, uh.
I actually had an interesting conversation with her about the dashboard cameras, uh, the other day, and dashboard cameras versus, um, body cams. And, you know, her explanation was that dashboard cams catch more and, you know, ca- catch more of the scene.
Right.
And usually if somebody is questioning a officer's judgment in that kind of a situation, when they come in and they look at the dash, at the footage from the dashboard cam, they're like, oh yeah, I guess I was a jerk. So there's, there's great value in them.
Yeah, and it's always pointed in the, I mean, you know, the cop can't turn in that situation turns, it's just there, so.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. All right, so this is, this will be a decision we'll have to make once we know what the town hall
Yeah.
repair or construction costs will be.
Uh, paving of Case Road. I know where Case Road is, I know a lot of it's dirt, that.
How much of that would be paving?
Uh, not, not paving gra- paving existing pavement.
Okay.
Cut, going over existing asphalt, not paving new.
So from Mars' down over to it goes to where Lincoln Drive.
Chichen Coles, yeah.
The new road, right? Fire, no, it's, okay, just, twenty names.
Yes, that exists, uh, do an overlay of the existing asphalt, the existing gravel remains ground.
How, I gotta take a, I, how bad is it?
Uh, it's due. It's not, uh, I mean, we're, we're, if we don't do it now, we may end up doing it next year as part of um, the Oak Ridge, Midwood's gonna get paved, Oak Ridge is gonna be done at the same time, so it probably becomes a project for next year's money. Uh, if we don't use this year's money to do Oak Ridge, use next year's money to do it, it remains, you know, a priority.
Well, because that's a huge number that can go to the.
Yeah, one, one of the, we, we underspent on, uh, on asphalt this year. Um, Sean scaled some things back, saved some money. Um, we, if all us being equal, we would have done Case this year. Um, but we were, you know, we were playing things pretty tight, so we pulled, kinda pulled back on, on that. This is what we would have done. It remains to be done. If, I, I certainly wouldn't recommend skipping the old town hall work to do this. This is, this is on the list as, yeah, we gotta do this. Let's say something goes, uh, goes sideways with the old town hall plan for some reason, and we're more flush than we think we, we might be.
Then we can do it.
Then this, this becomes a good use of funds, but it's not a, it does not, priority wise, it does not rise to the level of old town hall and.
Yep.
Well, that's why, that's where I was going, so, okay.
But Chris, one thing I just wanna, like, why it's even on the list, right? And I think people misunderstand when we say something like paving of Case Road, um, what you're really talking about is overlay.
Yes.
And the overlay is important because that's part of proactive management of keeping our roads in good shape, right?
Yeah, the, the overlay is what we, overlay is what we do with three to six hundred thousand dollars every year.
But people, people don't understand that. And that, they're kinda like, why are you paving over a road that's already paved? And they don't understand the whole concept of how overlay, you know, prevents future.
Do we know when the last time this was done on that road, or has it never been done?
Uh, I don't have that at my fingertips. It's been, uh, it's been a, a long time, but I couldn't tell you. I can find out.
Yeah, again, I'm just, I mean.
A record keeping of such things.
It's not that great. I understand that, yes, that's.
Yep.
Yeah, this is, it's driven by conditions and by, uh, adjacencies, like what are, where we, like, we're doing Oak, Maple Ridge is getting done, we can do Oak Ridge in combination with the owner of that road to save money.
Yep.
Those go to Case, and the, and the work is done at Maple Ridge. Case has been put off and put off for overlay because of construction on Maple Ridge and the heavy truck traffic that it's been carrying. You don't wanna overlay and then spend five years driving trucks over it.
Right.
So that's why it's coming up now, because Maple Ridge is now done, so. Um, it's not a question of will it be done or not, it's a question of which year's money
Yep.
do we use to do it?
Yep.
That's really what that comes down to.
Yep.
Uh, you, you may find that we add a few options here, but the, really the old town hall number is going to drive this entire conversation for you, you know. We don't know what to expect.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Not on your agenda, but on the purposes for having a meeting tonight was to set a date for the deliberative session. Uh, you wanna have that conversation, or do you wanna?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, I'm open for whatever date you guys suggest.
Well, the question is, do we want Saturday or a weeknight? And part of the reason for going away from, uh, part of the thinking was that people didn't like attending a town meeting on Saturday, and so did, they wanted to attend a deliberative session on Saturday. Last year was kind of an interesting situation because we did them both at the same time. The school wants to do their own this year. So it's up to us to decide, do we wanna do a weeknight, or do we wanna do the Saturday again?
And which, what weekend are we looking at, or what week?
You, uh, the fifth through the twelfth of February, fifth and twelfth are both Saturdays. You have either Saturday, so it's a, you know, an eight-day window.
And when is the school doing that?
Tuesday, the eighth, September.
Wait, and the fifth and the, our option is the fifth to the eighth?
Fifth to the twelfth.
Fifth to the twelfth.
That's Saturday to Saturday.
Uh, so they're scheduled for Tuesday, Tuesday the eighth, Tuesday the eighth, their snow date, it's Friday the eleventh. So God forbid there's a blizzard. Put off then. Uh, so I think your, your options are really either, I, I think it's, I think it's risky to just schedule the twelfth without a backup date.
Yep.
Whether or COVID or, you know, whatever.
Yep.
If the school thinks they can do their deliberation series during an evening, it's all what they have on their plate, I don't see why we can't do it in the evening.
Yeah, I, I, I.
I don't think we're nearly gonna take.
On a work night, we're gonna get even less people than we'll show up on a weekend, you know?
Well, I mean, Chris's point about waiting till the last day is a big risk.
Yeah, no.
A snowstorm, so.
I'm thinking Saturday, the fifth, not Sunday, cause that'll, you know, it's gonna cut in the folks that go to church. And then we have a, a snow date of like.
Thursday night?
Yeah, Wednesday or Thursday night.
Again, I don't mind if it's a, again, to me, guys, it really doesn't, if we do a Saturday, I mean, I'll make the call one way or the other if you want, for the decision purpose, but I'm okay with any day that we pick in there. I'll, I'll make it work, so.
The, uh, let's, I mean, I've had some short conversations with moderator and one of the supervisors of the checklist. Um, moderator was indifferent on the day, but really preferred to be at the school.
Will we use the cafeteria?
Uh, well, we, we have, we have a general, yeah, sure, you can use the school answer, but we don't have a specific date, um, I.
Well, could we use our gymnasium here?
It's, it's theoretically an option. Um, yeah, ventilation's better at the school, the parking's better at the school, uh, but it theoretically, yes, we could use it. Moderator preferred the school for ventilation purposes.
Yep.
Put a gymnasium.
Yeah, I would, I would assume, yeah, that, um.
Right.
You know, I mean, part of me was like, you know, try, let's try a weeknight because people were complaining about taking all day Saturday at town meeting. But then that means people would be out Tuesday, the eighth for school, and then Thursday, the tenth for us. So that's two nights in the week that would, people would take up.
Again, I don't mind the, the, the Saturday, the fifth, or whatever.
I'm okay with that.
Cause it's probably, you know what, people is probably gonna start at nine o'clock in the morning, we'll probably be out of there by eleven thirty.
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna be a five o'clock night or whatever. I think it's gonna be a two and a half hour meeting.
She being up to be relatively uneventful.
Yep.
Right.
You can start context.
I mean, it.
So do you wanna do Saturday, the fifth, with backup of Saturday, the twelfth?
Yeah, I think that's, I mean.
Or you might, you know, if you wanna get tricky, you might have the same, well, it's just for Friday night, packing them both in with Friday night would be tough, but you do the same backup. It's, chances are, if you do Saturday, they're not, there's not gonna be a four-day storm, so you could use Friday as a.
To do both, because their backup is the eleventh.
Yeah, you could do that too, but that, that puts you on a weeknight, but.
Yeah, and nobody's gonna go to like a school deliberative on a Friday night and then get up bright and early to go to another one the next morning.
Nobody's gonna go to a deliberative on Friday night, no matter what. No.
Surprised.
Well, because we'd have to. If I called you up and said, John, what are you doing?
But if, you know, if it is, if we do as a backup on Friday, I mean, and there's two of us, I mean, at least that's gonna give, you'll see people there for school and you'll see people there. It will provide a decent turnout for both.
Well, I think the, the odds that you're both on a storm backup date are probably pretty limited.
Right, oh yeah, chances of it happening would be.
Cause you're Saturday there, Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah.
If we're both on delay, then we got bigger problems than.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, I mean, if we both had to go on the eleventh, though, that would be a god-awful long meeting.
Yeah, that was.
That would be like, that would be like six o'clock to eleven o'clock on a Friday night.
I'm good with both Saturdays, and that's, works for me too, I mean.
If I have both Saturdays, fine, yep.
I've got, chances are, both of us using our backup days is gonna be.
Yep.
Okay, fifth back to the, backup to the twelfth.
Correct.
And it's gonna be a nine AM meeting, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
At the school if we can do it.
Yes. I think, uh, a Saturday is probably less, I mean, they're gonna pay somebody to come in, but it's probably less intrusive for them than a
Yep.
Uh, than a weeknight.
Do you have any basketball or any sports on Saturday at the school?
There probably is. There probably is, like the Nottingham Rec basketball and stuff like that, but.
Do we have to clear that with them first, or do we supersede them?
No, that's up to them. It's their building, but.
School, not Rec.
I will, uh, I'll reach out to them, you know, maybe basketball, put it later in the day.
Yeah, I mean, if we do it at nine, like you said, we should be out of there by eleven thirty.
Right.
Yeah. All depends on how the good, the person presenting the budget is.
Should go fine.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, you can continue with whatever you, uh, whatever you.
Uh, did anybody, I was overlooking our budgets from what the uh, police came, fire came, highway department came, um, and, you know, the highway department budgets seemed a lot, a large, uh, upgrade, you know, for what we're spending, for what they're looking at, the increase of money, I had it written down somewhere. How we're jumping four hundred fifty thousand in the operating budget. Oh, that's with the town, sorry, wrong one.
Highway's a hundred and twenty-nine.
Three hundred thousand increase for the highway department.
Uh.
We went from highway department last year was the actual year-to-date was five hundred forty thousand, and the proposed budget for next year was eight hundred and thirty thousand. The actual budget for two thousand twenty was, you know, was six hundred nineteen. It's, it's a two hundred thousand, whatever increase.
From twenty-one to twenty-two?
Am I reading that right?
Yeah.
Twenty-one to twenty-two is a hundred and thirty.
Yeah, it's a hundred and thirty.
Okay, so, hundred and thirty.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I was, I was looking at it too, John, and, um, you know, a lot of it is driven by the salt.
Hmm.
The salt costs in the newly acquired roads. That's what's a lot of, what he's got here is driven by.
Also a new position.
Yeah, so that's one thing I had, uh, talked to Chris briefly about is, um, when you look across a couple of different departments, the uh, a big increase to me is the additional personnel.
Employee.
Yep.
Yeah, additional employees, and so I asked Chris if he could give us a view of the budget without all of those new employees added, because the problem is that the, the numbers are, uh, split across, uh, multiple lines.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right, so it's difficult to see what the total impact is. So I'm, I'm not saying there's not room in the highway budget, John, but I think those are probably two big areas, is, is additional personnel and, uh, and some of the highway stuff, some of which is driven by the new roads. And I, I don't know, Chris, like, how, in some of those numbers that Sean provided for the highway, when you look at things like the, the salt and engineering fees and stuff like that, how much, how much room is there to trim some of those?
Uh, well, I think at, uh, at the very last minute, you can go back and look at salt because we will have gotten through the December
Yep.
portion of winter.
Yep.
And, you know, can then re-project or guess, project is too strong a word, but re-guess on the quantity that we'll use.
Yep.
So that, uh, that could change, could, could get worse, could get better. Um, so far, so good, um.
Yep.
Uh, the, the price per ton isn't gonna change, so it's really about what you're guessing you're gonna use.
It's usage, yep.
So that, you could, you could go back to that, uh, late in the game on the budget, um.
Yep.
And, um, engineering, uh.
That's a huge number.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, we can, for some of that, we could, uh, kind of decide without deciding ahead of time. Some of it would be eligible for ARPA, which we had touched on for island, uh, if it's stormwater related, um, and you can only, you can only promise to use that money so many times, but that's one, uh, that's one way. The other, the other thing you could do is you just say, it goes back to that discussion about, well, do you do you limp along and Band-Aid and dump stuff on the road and just get through today? Or do you try and make the structural improvements that make sense in the long run? And that, you kinda had that conversation, a little bit of that conversation was Sean when he was here.
Yep.
Um, if, if the money isn't appropriated and it isn't there for us to spend, then they're, they're just gonna get through today. They're not gonna try and make the structural changes, and they'll, they'll make you. It's, it's just, it's a priority question for you.
That's also been one of the pain points that we've heard from people over and over again, is not doing proper engineering for the jobs that we do. Um, one other big number in there, John, is that, um, line two fifty-four, the addition of the time employee that would be shared with the recycling and rec department, and that is, that number that's there is a hundred percent of the salary rate. That salary wasn't split.
Yes, that wasn't spread, right.
But you could see that would pretty much cut that increase by about forty percent.
Yeah, that's a, that's a fifty, probably, I don't know, the fifty's close in the full number of that position, and that doesn't include the benefits and the taxes.
Correct, so that could cut that number in half. Yep. Yep. So.
Yes, cause that's, so that number, yeah, cause that's gonna be, we can pull some out of their fund, their, other budgets.
We can just say, no, we're not gonna hire.
You'll see, you'll see the benefit line would come down, the tax line would come down a little bit.
Yep.
As, as the decisions.
Yep, yep. Just to talk about the scope of what we've got here, you guys, so right now, the increase is overall for the budget is not something that any one of us would actually put forward because it's nine percent increase.
Mm-hmm, not, I'm, I'm, I'm having a discussion right now.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 exactly.
Too high.
But tell me, Chris, we talked about this a little bit the other day, and tell me if I'm not stating this correctly, but. But to get ourselves down to like a three percent increase, we're gonna have to look at like three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred thousand cut out of this budget. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, uh, if ten percent is four hundred thousand, then, uh, two percent is eighty thousand. So if you want a two percent.
To a nine now.
You gotta, you, well, you're, you're, you're getting, creeping up on ten by the time you. I've got later stuff with you, but anyway, you, you need to, you need to cut that, what is your total budget show, three hundred and ninety something?
Three seventy-three, well, what we've, the company we've got.
Yeah, so that's gotta come down to like seventy or eighty to make a two thousand dollar, two, two percent increase.
So.
You gotta find hundreds of thousands.
Exactly, that, that's the point, it's like, it's.
You gotta find three hundred thousand just to get the conversation going where you.
Right.
Where you want it.
Right. So that, that's a lot of.
Sharpens pencils, right.
That.
You're gonna need a pencil.
We, we're gonna need a razor. Yeah, there was a kid in the parade who was sharpening his finger, his, uh, pencil that he had with his fingernail, that's not gonna work here. So that's why.
The only reason why, I'm, I'm, I mean, one of my concerns about this and this, this amount of increase that we're seeing, or going forward, this is the fact of that, that revow, a lot of people. You know, their prices just went up on their houses and all those values, and now we're gonna stick them with this, when they're just basically going. They don't even know if they got used to the first set of round of numbers and just jack their taxes. And then for us to come in with a, a number like this, which can, it's just another add-on to the top of it. You know, I mean, I'm pushing things down the road, but you know, I always like to see that if we're gonna do it, the, you know, the three, four percent every year, it looks a heck of a lot better than the year of ten. Uh, just because it's a large number for people to bite into, it's like.
Yep.
And go on, and it's more for the fact of just people and their money wise, you know, it's, and budgeting themselves, now they do their stuff, so.
Yep, exactly.
You know, if we couldn't, I mean, we're not gonna take the whole thing down, but if, can we comfortably take off five percent, which would be. Two hundred thousand, what'd you say, how much is that?
Uh, uh.
Roughly, I think it's ballpark, we're not.
Ballpark.
Yeah, I mean, don't go.
We, we can make this number, whatever you wanna make this number, that's, you know, we can.
Right, I think.
Yeah, but I don't wanna sacrifice stuff the town needs and stuff that's done, I mean, I'm not, no, I don't, I don't think it's fair to cut everything just because of that, but. I do think we have to do our due diligence on stuff that we don't see that might not be necessary, or where we can cut, or bring down budget lines. It's something that we should really take a stronger, the budget committee's gonna do it when they see it anyways, but, you know, I'd rather go with them.
Yep, yep.
At a more appropriate number of seven or, or six percent, and then watch them maybe cut a percent to two off it or something like this.
Yeah, my, my whole reason for saying that is tweaking with the price of salt isn't gonna get us there. You know, and, and that's why I was looking at the, uh, the added personnel cost, cause to me, that's, that's the biggest.
I mean, I don't know, the fifteen thousand for the new, the gravel increase for the new roads. I would. You know, keep great and make it, they, and not, not spend the money on it.
Well, I, I mean.
You know, and just, just the fifteen grand, and it's only, and we're talking a small amount, but that's just a number I'd say.
Yeah.
Would be gone right there, um. You know, the engineering consulting things, I don't think that, you know, I mean, I'd like to see that number, if we spent seven last year, you know, the most should be ten, not twenty-five. There's thirty grand that's gone right there on those two lines, I'm just, I'm just seeing numbers, like, I know we're not gonna be able to take.
Yep.
You know, huge things off here, but.
You know what I.
I, I understand when, when we're planning these out here, you're also playing the game of making sure, not the game, but you're making sure that there is money if necessary needed. That's why we have to have it in the budget.
Yep.
There's a point where you have to say, well, guess what, we just didn't make it, cause we didn't have enough, and we'll have to make do with what we did.
Yep.
Work on it for next year, you know, and, you know, you tighten your belt on that.
Yep. So I think, um, you guys tell me what you think about this, um, so I agree, let's, let's look at that, but I think we should do that with Sean.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so, and I, I think, one of the things we didn't get to with Sean was, uh, the warrant articles related to the highway department. And so I think we need to bring Sean back in to talk about those, to talk through this. And I'm wondering what you think about while we have him here, having the conversation about the road standards at the same time. Cause I, cause I, you know, we got your, um, comments, John, but I, I think like, there has to be some discussion about. What you're thinking compared to what he's thinking, right?
You mean for, we were talking about road standards?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, obviously, we should push that off till after the budget's, is done, because again.
That's, that's.
You know, that's, you know, and then we can tackle that whole thing, um, you know, at a different time. I might not be here, who knows?
No, but you'll be there.
I'll be, I'll be somewhere, but.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that, if that's what the board wants, as long as we.
I mean, we're gonna have to tackle it one way, it's not gonna go away.
As long as we promise to tackle it in January.
Absolutely, I mean, again, I don't, not to push it, but I'm just saying where. You know, here we are in December.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fine, let's tackle it after the first of the year, but let's.
But I mean, as long as the board's comfortable with it, it's not our decision, it's everybody's decision.
Well.
So, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
We can decide tonight to do that, but then. Or, or what do you feel, how do you, I mean. Would you think we have the time to tackle it, I don't even wanna go to her.
Um, I'm just, I'm just thinking ahead, I mean, you know.
We've got what, three meetings? We've got three meetings.
That we, yeah, we had to deal with budget, CIP. Um. Yeah, I mean, I just don't, I, I don't see us getting to that this year anyways, so.
Alright, so do we wanna bring Sean back in to kinda go through his budget again and see where there might be room to trim, and then, um, talk about the warrant articles at the same time?
And I think we're prepping Sean before he comes in, is that he should take a second look at this when he comes in, to be aware, not us telling him what he should cut. Where he should really strongly say, okay, I think I can, I know I can, I can do something.
That's fair.
Yeah, he knows, he knows where he's got wiggle room.
To come in more.
Or when do we.
To really start to narrow some of that down.
When do we wanna do that?
I don't feel like telling him, we have to say, listen, you have to do this, we wanna make sure that he's.
That's fair, yep.
So we're.
Yep.
Working together on this and not being.
So do you wanna try to do that next week? I think we should.
Uh, next week on the agenda, is again, we have it on for budget, uh, old town hall renovations, which is basically the same things, we're gonna go over Dale with that. Uh, and then we're gonna talk about the kitchen proposals, we should have time.
Yes, it's, it's all budget.
Oh, no.
Excel. This is all quick, yeah.
To get that stuff, so.
Yep, yep.
It's all budget more, all, all the time.
And then. Do you agree that we should see a pass of the budget that has all the numbers for, for additional personnel taken out of it?
How many personnel total?
Uh, in new, new positions, there's three at the fire department, starting in Q two, late, no, Q three, late Q three.
Yep.
Uh, one at, uh, one shared public works and rec, and one part-time, full-time at library. Which they came and talked about the proposal.
Right, yep, yep.
Yeah, yup.
Uh, thirty something hour, you know, thirty hour week till forty.
Yeah, I remember, yeah.
Yep.
Yup.
There's no other new slots, no full-time benefit eligible positions, and the part-time. It's part-time, nothing significant in any other place.
Correct.
But we did also put a COLA increase in here, across the board, because we wanna take care of, you know.
Right, right. Right.
Our employees.
Those new positions were not like, for mission critical functions, these were.
Uh, well, firefighters are the, you know, transition to the round the clock.
Right, right.
Staff, uh, model, and take the load off the call force, um, so those are, that work is critical, how you get it done is.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
For the fire department positions, would it make sense to? I was thinking like, anything that we cut out completely, just budget one dollar for, in case things change and that we have the opportunity to. To go forward on them, but.
Well, you got a salary line anyway.
You do, yeah.
That, that one's really an all or nothing proposition.
Right.
Yep. Yep.
So, yeah, to answer your question, yeah, we'll.
Yep.
Take that approach, I think.
Yep. So you're gonna talk to Sean about when he's coming in next week?
Yep.
Okay.
Can you ask Sean to back through, or?
You know, I know the rec department had a bunch of big things too, and I hate to talk, I mean, they're doing such a great job.
I know.
Everything that they do, but, you know, I just was taking some general notes, line seven, you know, if they could drop that two grand, line six, another three grand, line twelve. Take off that seven thousand with the bench, I mean, there's. I mean, there's twelve thousand dollars right there.
How are you looking at line six, seven?
Uh, I'm looking at this, I'm using this old piece.
Oh, 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 fine, fine, yeah, yeah, okay.
This is where I was making all my notes, cause this is when we, when they came to, they proposed this to us, so I'm using this as my.
Yeah. Yep.
My note sheet, that's why you said the other number, I was like, where, where'd you get that from?
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at his spreadsheet.
Right, so I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, there's room to trim there, I mean, clearly.
I mean, anything we can trim and do, the due diligence of trimming is good for the town and good for the people, and I think we do. I mean, there's stuff that we just, I mean.
Yep.
There has to be some trimming, and again, I understand where we could spend all this, but.
Yeah, it's just, it's actually, it's also not trimming, we've gotta do some wholesale mowing.
No, no, and again, it's, you know, but I mean, as you read on there, you know.
Yep.
Uh, we will also use this line to purchase tools, equipment for the trails and the community cleanups. Well, I mean, it's a two hundred percent increase that she has on recommendation supply of equipment, and I know she's like painting the things and stuff like this, and the porta potties is three grand, but. Now, that number could be, you know, five or four or something instead of six, you know, instead of a four thousand.
So do you wanna talk to her again, or?
Well, I mean, there's certain line items, I don't know how we, that. I mean, what is she talking about, you know, I should've asked her, it should've been a little more detailed when I was here, woods for tools and equipment, she's talking like getting some shovels or something like this? You know, or weed whacker things, or little trim things, I mean, what's she talking about for tools, are they expecting for those?
Let's bring her back in.
Yeah, I mean, I gotta.
Rakes, rakes for the beach.
Let's, let's bring, let's bring her back in.
Yeah.
Yep. Could be a long meeting next week, but I think it's important.
Well, again, I just don't, I don't think going, I, I do not feel, I don't feel comfortable going in front of the budget committee with ten, nine percent or ten percent.
Well, we're gonna tomorrow.
Well, okay, but again.
But this is not the second time.
But I mean, after our meeting tonight, at least they know that we're having conversations about where we're doing this, and that will work.
Yep, yep.
You know, we're not saying, here it is, and.
Yeah.
Okay.
But still, though, I mean, you know, inflation's running five and change percent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, it's not unreasonable for us to bring forward a budget with a five to six percent increase, because that's consistent with inflation, all of our departments are facing. Those same higher costs.
And I'm with you on the five or six percent, I just don't think when we're starting to hit the double digit is where we, we don't wanna be there.
Yeah, and we've, I mean, we've kept our increases so, you know, in that three to four percent range for so long.
Yeah, what was last year, we were like one point two or something, I mean, we were, last year was great.
Doesn't look good when the school's going in with one point five.
Yeah.
Well, somebody's gonna offset each other, right?
We, we have the new political reality of, you know, default comparison on the value.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trump, all of these things, you, you may be in a position in the margin, having to cut more.
Yep.
So.
Yep, yep. Alright, so we wanna see Sean again, we wanna see Courtney again. We wanna see the budget with all additional personnel taken out.
Yeah.
Across all lines.
Yeah, make sure they know that we're gonna be talking about. Where do they have wiggle room?
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
It's the only reason that one gets called.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
I know.
And, Chris, when you talk to them before they come in, I mean, anything that they can suggest, if they think they can take, you know, even if it's five hundred dollars off a line item, that makes a difference when we start adding it all. I know it sounds, any, some people, but it's.
No, no, they're, they're, they're expecting this thing.
So.
Okay.
Every bit they can, you know, tighten up would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Excellent.
Uh, any other additional parts of the budget that anybody wanted to bring up or talk about, or?
Oh, this is the hardest, uh, this is the hardest budget I've been through with us.
Sorry, I'm just doing a quick scan, in case I don't wanna forget to not bring up something. Yeah, when we talk about the fire and rescues budget about going up, when it comes to safety for the town, I mean, I don't. Knowing Chief and what he does, that's a tough spot to cut from him, just because, I mean, that's town safety that he's talking about, so.
It would be good to see the call. Line data from him.
Yeah, cause that would definitely help support us.
Is this something we need to act on tonight, the trustee?
If you, yeah, you saw that a week ago and we didn't deal with it, if you are comfortable dealing with it, go right ahead.
It's a one-year term.
Yeah, and it's a reappointment of an existing alternate, so.
There you have it, somebody's willing to do it.
Got it? Alright, well, I'm gonna make a motion that the select board, uh, approve the reappointment of Debbie Ricker of eighty-three Stevens Hill Road, Nottingham, as an alternate member. On the library board of trustees.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Right.
unanimous?
Did I, should I have seconded?
Get that? Well, I thought you did by raising your.
Put the finger up.
Second.
This is the appointee of the, uh.
Reappointment of Debbie Ricker as an alternate member of the library trustees.
Hey, Chris, um.
Yeah, I, I figured we were, it was here in front of me, so, I know, I probably should've waited a second, but.
Um. There was a, sorry, like a silly one, but, um. The. Town hall buildings cleaning. Went up.
Are we using the same cleaning person that we've been using for the past twenty years?
Oh, I'm trying to find it, sorry.
Oh, salary maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually, I haven't started using the first name, that's a possibility that's interesting.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's line one twenty-one, right. God, we finally found somebody.
Well, just a, you know, on a contract basis, not a employee basis, but, um.
Brake fix on call.
Just, yeah, I haven't got a list. No, you already did.
Oh, did you? Oh.
Um.
Is that it for regular stuff?
Can we act on, um, the conservation, uh, thing that they brought to us last week about the adoption of RSA thirty-six A four A. L I B.
RSA thirty-six, one, four dash A, section one B.
I'm com, you know, thinking about what they said, I'm comfortable with it, it doesn't.
Depending on what crescentous I am too, so.
Yeah, I'm alright with it, I was kinda. Worried about that situation where if the, um. You know, the third-party organization went defunct and nobody was minding the shop on, on a property that they were responsible for, that it would, you know. Become our obligation, but it's, you know. There's really no mechanism to impose that obligation on us, and it, if I, if I remember, uh. Terry was saying it's never happened anyways, so it's kind of a non-starter. So, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
So you need a motion on us?
Well, uh, no, if, basically what they need to know is, what the conservation commission needs to know is that you're gonna put that question on the warrant. Uh, if not, then we oughta give them time to go collect signatures and put it on there by petition, but if you were all. Commit to them that you'll put it on the warrant, then they can, you know, move on.
Yep.
I feel comfortable with that.
That's fine, yep.
Yeah, there's no harm in it, and it gives them options. To conserve more. To conserve more land without.
Yeah, it's fine.
Involving the town, yeah, I'm good with it.
Yep, yep.
You wanna leave the cove road?
We should.
Yep. So, it is our, the section of cove road, not the whole road. This is the access which the fire department uses for emergency access for the boats during the summer. Uh, it is pretty badly washed up. And I don't think the town has done anything for gravel or anything on that in at least ten or twelve years. You know, and I use that as my own reference points, 'cause I've been, I was on that road since two thousand and four, and I remember when Johnny came, and that was a long time ago. That he actually put a little bit down, uh, just to smooth it out, that's all that the people on the road are looking for, is to get it so that it's smoothed out, and it's just, so when they hire a plow, it's plowable.
I thought they were looking for the town to plow it.
We can, um, I don't think that's necessary, as long as the town will put some gravel and get it down, that they will take care of the plowing. Of that section of the road, 'cause it's basically their driveway.
Right, so this is the. This is that gray area where we always get ourselves into legal trouble. I do think that this is a perfect use case scenario for an emergency lane.
So, so the, the question on the table is, will the town put down some gravel or something like that to make the road a little bit better for travel?
For emergency purposes, obviously, for that purpose right there, if you want for.
But that, that segment is not a part of the official town road, correct?
Yes. Well, the, the.
So legally, we can't spend money on it.
No, so here's the problem with the language of the warrant article.
Right, it's, they are listed as fourteen Cove Road.
Right.
Even though when you go down the street the other way, the, the cove road goes that way too, cove road Vs.
Part of the language.
Multiple legs that.
But part of the language of the warrant article is that because the way that it was worded, the town now inherited parts of roads that they never took care of before, that weren't emergency lanes. There's multiple spots where they weren't part of the emergency lane, they weren't cared for, but now because they are that road.
But it wasn't specifically delineated that that segment was one of them.
No, but it, it says Cove Road, if you're Cove Road, you're Cove Road, if that was in the lawsuit.
Then which side of it is Cove Road, can't be both, you can't have two roads with the same name.
Well, if you, if you, yes, oh.
Did you just move to Nottingham?
Uh, this is why, this is why also when we were talking about the nine-one-one numbers, is there's no such a problem, is because again, for that example right there.
Right.
You're talking barred area, like, you're talking other roads in town too that have the same thing, there's six fingers that go off it.
Right.
All still the same road.
Right.
That's where the, when people say you're gonna change your number, you gotta change your name of your road, is where this real objection's gonna come with the nine-one-one, 'cause they've had that way for fifty, sixty years. You know, it's, that's a, that's why that nine-one-one's really gonna be an issue.
If that's all they're, if, if that's all they're asking for is little maintenance on the road. Um, and they're not asking for, for plowing, then I'm okay with that, part of the reason why I think we should be doing it is because there's actually a sign there that says, you know, fire department access.
Right, you can't block it.
Basically says, the fire department uses the road, right?
And you can't, but it's, it's their, it's their only access to the middle part of Takaway Lake. It's, they have to either go from Fundy, or they go there, or they have to access the state park, those are the only three accesses the fire department, unless somebody else lets.
They have one up on Lakeview.
Okay.
Yeah.
They do?
Yeah. Uh, across from Levinson's House, roughly, yeah, it's, there's a sign.
Oh, down in Neil's Cove? Okay, so it's, again.
Yeah.
That's still way on, that's.
Yeah.
On the whole side, like.
Yeah.
This is their only way to access in to, uh, get there, and there was an incident, um. Where the road wasn't maintained enough, uh, about five years ago, there was an incident on the lake.
Yeah.
And they couldn't there, and they had to actually, they went down there, they couldn't access it there, so they had to go all the way around on a different road, because.
What's the guidance we provide to Sean, though, in terms of how much he does?
Listen, you know, I mean, I'm not opposed to taking care of this little spur, but I just think we need to label it correctly, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, if we could actually go back and label that thing as, as an emergency lane, I'd be cool with that right there.
Yeah, I mean.
We do what we need to to keep it an emergency lane and open, and that's, that's.
Right, and even for winter, huh? Right, and I don't think we should be.
In current language, that means plowing.
Right.
If you compare it to every other emergency lane.
Right, and, and I, I wouldn't feel right about only doing gravel and not plowing, right?
Yeah, but it's a very steep incline and not the greatest turnaround, I wouldn't wanna see our eighteen-wheeler go down, and then.
Well, I know, but like, in, in a winter emergency, they're gonna have to get a vehicle down there with their snowmobile or what have you, you know, their, their ATV.
Well, the homeowner was, is gonna plow that section of the road to get to their house.
Oh, right, but if, if, if we're gonna throw gravel on it because it's for town use, then. Why shouldn't we take care of the snow problem as well, right? I mean, that's, by, by definition, we're saying it's for fire department use, by definition, we're making it an emergency lane.
Dabrowski's guy in his truck would actually, it could easily take care of it, it's not, but it, it wouldn't be something where I would recommend our highway department taking a twelve-wheeler down and sanding it by no means at all, but.
I mean, we have the smaller trucks too, right, I mean.
Right.
We have ways of plowing it.
Well, yeah.
I, I just wouldn't feel right about doing the summer maintenance and not the winter maintenance if. We're doing it for the purpose of keeping it open for the fire department, that's all.
You should, you should hear directly from the fire chief on what his needs are relative to that, 'cause, yes, he uses it, but.
How often?
Well, it's more of a summertime use, the use of for, I think.
Yeah, and I, I, I shouldn't try and regurgitate the conversation with him, because, you know, he doesn't know how the sign got there.
It's there.
This isn't, this isn't a.
So like a resident might've put up the sign?
I don't, I don't.
No, it's the same sign as up on Neil's Cove. Same type of sign.
Okay.
Talk to the chief about the realities of, you know, if he didn't have access at that point, what would he do, or what, you know? There's, there's more to that conversation than I, I can't relay to you effectively, but. It's worth you having a conversation with him to understand what the fire department's needs are around that spot in particular. Before you go. Buying it for the sake of the fire department, you should talk to the fire department about.
Fair.
Yeah.
You okay with that?
What is the answer? Talking to the fire chief to see what his, what his real needs are, expect to that.
So what answer are we giving to the, um. The residents on that part of the cove road?
That we want input from the fire chief, and that we'll try to get him in here on the, we meeting the twenty-first?
We're meeting a week from now.
And then a week after, it's the twentieth?
Two weeks after that, you can meet the twentieth.
Uh.
Wait, we're meeting the thirty-first?
You're scheduled thirteen and twenty-seven.
Oh, okay. You're trying to give him a, a response, John, I can.
Yeah, I, well, that's, and again, I said, you know, I was, when I talked to her, I said, listen, I gotta bring this in front of the board, I'm not the person that says, sure, we're gonna do anything, 'cause it's not my decision, it's.
Really?
It's the board's decision on what we do, so, I told her that tonight the board would discuss it, that's what we're doing right now, so we're fulfilling what we, we talked about us to do, but.
So do we wanna go for an all-night, an all-nighter next week?
Yeah.
I mean, uh. Bring the chief in, it's gonna take ten minutes, right?
We could get that answered by email.
We could.
Right.
We could.
Point dragging him in here just.
I mean, again, what they're looking for from discussion of what, that part of the road, you know, it's 'cause they, they knew when they bought, they knew the thing that the road was never plowed, and they were fine with that, but the road was, you know, needed, because it is a town road. It needs a little TLC with some gravel just to fill in the, the washouts, to smooth it out a little, that's all they're looking for, is so that they can, it's still gonna be accessible, but it's still the town road, but. They're not asking for the town to start going way on there, that's up to us, whether, if we wanna plow it, again, it's a small section, it's not even three hundred feet, you know, it's, it's not, we're talking, we're not talking something that's.
Can we get two, can we get two pieces of information this week via email?
Sure.
One is chief's use of it, and second is what, what would Sean do up there?
Okay.
All right, and then let's decide next Monday.
And if it's washout repair, that, that would be his go-to, is gravel.
Yeah, exactly, and if, if it's, if it's, he sends a couple of guys out there for a couple hours and it's no, no big deal, then, yeah.
Under the, the language of last election warrant article, are, would we be safe legally dropping some gravel on that road?
Uh, you can't spend town money on private property, and the question before you is. Do you wanna make, this, uh, as it stands right now, this is private property.
Why?
Because of the judgment that I made and said, no, this is not part of Cove Road.
Okay.
That, that decision was appealed to you, so, it, it sits now as private, as it always has been, private property was not an emergency lane, it was not anything, it was a driveway with a fires, with a fires department sign on it legally. Uh, so the decision that you face is, the, you know, the resident asking you to overturn my judgment that it's private property, and that it's part of the road that was named in the warrant article. And it's part of a class-five road, that's. I have to tell you that you shouldn't spend public money on private property. Did it for decades, but.
Where, where it, where it gets complicated for me is the fact that there is the sign that says that the fire department uses it, regardless of whether Jay remembers where it came from or not.
I mean, they have, I mean, they're down there, that's where they put their.
Yeah, the train there.
Tool train and all that stuff, so, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
So, does it, does it feel more like an emergency lane than it does like a class-five road, maybe?
Yep.
There are.
Then the language becomes tricky, because it's called Cove Road. So do you, do you make sections of roads emergency lanes?
Uh, we.
Can.
We have that already, we, uh.
Okay, but we would have to go back and go through the process of making that stretch emergency.
Yes, that would be a new thing, that's not a, that, that, that doesn't, that, that's not a legacy emergency lane.
Right, yep.
You know, got left behind in the warrant article.
We'd be creating one.
You're creating one, you're, you're taking on a new responsibility.
I never thought I'd hear myself say.
If, if there's a way we can make everybody happy and be legal at the same time, we'll keep working on that, uh, trying to find a way to do that. Short of buying another piece of road.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Yep, yep. Okay. All right, so what do we, what do we need?
You need the chief's input on.
His needs.
That location.
Yep. Yep, how he uses that location.
And what Sean would do. If he was pressed to do something down there.
Yep. And then the third question for us would be.
And when Sean looks at that area. What's in the water, uh, part of it? You know, 'cause there's a ramp down there, that's up to the residents, are that use that, that's nothing to do with the town, don't tell them to look at that, don't even tell them to think about that, whatever, where the water line is, it's just the hill, stop.
Okay, um.
Can he do that?
Well, because the lake's, the lake's down, so the water, you can see all the way down through and stuff, that's.
No, it's more the question of. The questions that we, we've never, we haven't delved into that are gonna leap up someday is these new lane, these new roads that have boat ramps on them.
Yep.
Or ended boat ramps, or whatever.
Where's the line?
We haven't solved that question in other places, so we're, we're gonna create that.
The line should be always the high-water mark, stop.
That would, if you, if you were to look at a survey and do this the right way, that's what you'd say, but that's not where we are, so. That, I, you know, where's the road at?
Why aren't we there if that's the way that you would do it?
We're not, we, we're not talking about it, um. We don't have a plan or a survey that shows where the road is, that's why we're, that's why this question exists.
Fine, yeah, 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 yeah.
Right, so, um, that's how we get here to begin with, so.
Yeah, okay.
Um. If you, if you decide to designate it somehow, or delineate it somehow, or define it somehow, then you can do that in your, in your decision, you can say, yeah, it's. It's a class-five road up to the high-water mark, or whatever, you can say that, and you can have something to stand on.
My one hesitation, John, is that whatever decision we make here is gonna have ripple effects, whether we want it to or not.
Every decision we make is pretty much gonna have a ripple effect.
Yes.
So it's, it's just the weight of which, which way it goes to.
Yeah.
How big that, that wave is, that's coming, or how big the wave could possibly be.
Yeah.
What happens with a spur?
This is, again, one of the things that they, and I just. Is minimum, mi- you know, like what we've always done on all the roads for all the years, was it was always done was minimum maintenance, and that warrant article that went through was to keep the minimum maintenance the town was doing. It never said that it was supposed to break, no one said what we had to go and do anymore.
Well, it does, if it becomes a town road, then the town owns it, the town has an obligation to keep its roads up to stuff.
Up to minimum standards.
Right. No, 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 the, the town is gonna do what it needs to do to make sure that it's doing it right, so it's not wasting time and resources having to continually go out and redo things, you gotta admit. That the roads are in way better shape now than they've ever been, my road is in way better shape than it's ever been.
I spent two and a half hours on Sunday filling potholes on, on my road. So, with my own time, my own buckets, shovel, and.
How, but, but how long is that gonna last?
No, but you had, I mean, you have to, how big the pothole gets is bigger, you know, I was just trying to do minimum maintenance on the road to keep it so, the potholes, when the rain comes, they don't get bigger than they already were.
Yeah, well.
So I was just trying to do my, my civic duty, and I was just had some time, so I took care of it. Not looking for any praise about it, just saying it's what you do. You know, some are maintained better than others, that's, that's, that's the way it is.
The warrant article did not say minimum maintenance.
Well, we've always done, I consider minimum maintenance, and the standard was to keep what the town was doing the whole time. And the whole time was that's what we were doing, so.
That may bring the attention, but that's not the way that the language plays out, but anyway.
As we go on, this conversation, we can go on, plenty of time.
Kick, kickoff's at eight fifteen.
Yeah. What I wanna ask was like, during the E nine-one-one process, what happens with a sp- a spur road like that, does it become cove road extension or something of that effect?
Uh, that one in particular, I don't recall what the state has identified there, it's, in order to be a road, uh, and not a driveway, there's a standard in E nine-one-one.
Or the three houses, right?
I think it is three, and that's, so that would just be a drive, be a shared driveway in, in the, in the eyes of E nine-one-one, it wouldn't get renamed, I think. I think it's three, and I think, uh, that, so that's how the decision was made.
Under DOT as well, but then, under the emergency lane statute, that would dis, it would disqualify that from any eligibility into the emergency lane statute, having less than three houses.
No, that is not in the emergency.
No?
No, that's why some of the emergency lanes go to, you know, go to such and such's house, you know, that's. There's, there's no quantity or anything, it's entirely your discretion in terms of what it is.
Well, I think, I thought it was for the definition of road, right, like if it has three houses or less, it can't be a road under any definition. Can't even be a private road.
E nine-one-one, E, E, road law and E nine-one-one are two completely different.
Mutually exclusive?
Yes, they're completely different worlds, don't try to make one fit with the other.
Right.
One's, one's lawyers, one's cops and firefighters, it doesn't, doesn't work that way.
Okay.
Um. I make motion, we go to non-public for RSA ninety-one dash A.
Call in three-two.
Call in three-two, sorry, A.
A.
Second.
Roll call.
Hi, Donna Davis.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, John Morn, we're gonna go non-public right now, once we, uh, leave non-public, we will, uh, close the open meeting. Thank you, Donna Am.